Good morning, everybody. It's 9 o'clock on February 27, 2017. And I'm calling for our county officials to order. Today we have Bob Miller from Crossroads County Church with the communications. And while it ends up in stand-up, it remains standing for the pledge.
Yes.
Father God, we thank you this morning. I try to think about the things I know about prayer. One of the things I know is that you taught us to be thankful in everything. Perhaps not for everything, but you said in every circumstance of life, we need to have an attitude of gratitude. We need to be thankful, so we are this morning. You taught us to pray for wisdom. And then I think when we take on the responsibility, such as these commissioners have, it would be wise, always wise, to pray for your wisdom, so that, Father, those decisions that are made are just and right. Then, Father, you taught us to pray for each other. And I'm just almost absolutely sure that in everybody's heart and mind today, there's somebody they're concerned for. They're praying for them, and they're praying with them. And even right now, they're praying, not out loud, but they're praying, and they're talking to you, their best friend. So for all of these things, my Father, we are thankful, and we lay our petitions before you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Judge D. Justice Smith, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the mistletoe, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to Texas class, pleasure to the justice of the Texas, one state under God, one infinite mistletoe.
Number one on the agenda is regulation of minutes on the February 13, 2017, officials' court. Any changes to this question? Number two, the vouchers to consider next upon approval of payment of vouchers processed by the county attorney's office during February 8th, February 13, February 22nd, sorry, 2017. Check number 173443, 173658, and wire transfer state 85863 in amount of $2 million, $199,901, $346.
I move we approve the vouchers as presented.
Second, third discussion. One quick question, Judge. Page seven of 26, check number 1735342, Blackman Morning, $129,000 for the flooding in the courthouse. I was wondering what the insurance premium would be on this?
Uh, we'll leave the $25,000.
The $25,000?
Yeah, the $25,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion signal favor which right hand. Insurance report. Okay. Come up anyway, aren't you so? Anything unusual on this report, or is it?
It's just normal planes. There's nothing that hits a threshold for high planes or anything like that.
That's so recognized. Before, compensatory time, do your report on compensatory time and take any action necessary.
You should all have a summary of the compensatory time for this quarter in your packets. We reviewed all of the records, and then on the 22nd, sent out email notifications and used the same template that we established last quarter for that notification. There were four departments that were identified, but a total of seven employees that were at or about 100 hours. I might add that the seven employees, of those seven employees, they were all minimum, minimally, at or over 100 hours. The seven employees is the same number that we had last, for last quarter. So that you know where you're at there. The department heads were notified on the 22nd via email, and we immediately received responses from two and four department heads and all of the officials. And three of those seven employees identified had already been scheduled or measures had been taken to reduce those comp balances. The sheriff's office has notified me that they will be here immediately tacking comp balances at 88 in order to try to stave off that 100-hour tap. So they're taking some very proactive measures there. And we'll do our next comp report on the 22nd of the 7th commissioners' court.
Hey, just one quick question on that fourth bullet there. The three of the seven were being monitored. Is there something happening with the other four, or that you're just saying we got a result back and they're being worked out?
I'm just saying that we immediately got a response on three of the seven. That's not to say that the other four aren't handling and managing. And we just didn't get that immediate response from those other department heads. But they have, in the past, been very proactive in trying to manage that.
So I guess it's fair to say that this process, the, you know, in the form of the police coming forward, I assume that it's much more less difficult for you?
Yes, sir. I believe that all of the department heads and elected officials are making good strides and efforts to keep those comp balances down.
Any more questions? So recognize. Number five, human resources report to here before Department of Treasury, Form 4564, information document request and take any action necessary.
As the commissioners' court requested last court, a place is standing out on the agenda. Since the last commissioners' court, we get all of that information together, all the data, and send it out via secure USB drive on the 14th of February, which was the deadline that the IRS had established for us. The packet was mailed, return receipt requested via certified mail. On the 14th, we have received the return receipt where it was received on the other end. At the time that I created this summary, there had been no further information to report. Late last week, I did get a request for some additional information, a couple of questions that the agent had with regard to our 941s for 2014, and also on a couple of accounts listed in our charter of accounts. And I have scheduled follow-up with him this afternoon via telephone to walk through the questions that he has from us. And our place is standing out.
Does this happen often? Do they have that ever in your, since you've been here, have they ever done this?
No.
Oh, they've not. And that not.
Yeah.
Sir, you have questions? Number six, treasures report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, so I'll just go over the quick numbers and investments, and then I want to talk about A and B for just a second. But Texas class this morning is at 97 basis points, and we have $19,76,643.15 invested in Texas class. Texpool Prime is .899, and we have $51,563.49. And Texpool is 53.85 this morning is the rate, and we have $40276.80 there. The bank contacted me about two weeks ago and said, you know, if we had any more money that we can invest or keep in our A and B general fund checking account, that they would work with us on the rates. And so they got back with me, and they're now paying us 1% full at our A and B checking account. And they will check it every Monday and make sure that they're at least competitive with our highest investments. So this morning in A and B, I have $18,915,174. We still have seeders, $5 million seeders invested, and so our total cash this morning
And what was the reason for them wanting to be so competitive? That's interesting conversation.
I know. You know, what's different is the fact that people want money, and so it is getting competitive. And there are people that are asking, will you invest with us? And so that's, that's a good thing this market is steady. Yeah. It's a blessing.
Thank you.
Number seven, Senator Stacey, 2017, do you consider next upon approval of the use of the Santa Fe courthouse grounds for Hyman Square and use of the Santa Fe building parking lot to accommodate the empty market for Saturdays? That other events are permitted to the Bucks Park Street. Those dates are M.C. Forest Services, Harley Park, June 29, Susan G. Common Rice for the Cure, September 23rd, Tri-State Fair Parade, September 16th, 2017. Good morning.
Oh, good morning. Thanks for having me. We are so excited. We're already booking some caterers and some great entertainment for Hyman on the square. And we're just coming to officially thank you for letting us take over the lawn on Wednesdays at noon, and hopeful that this is a tradition we can continue for our community. Last year, even though we had some unseasonably warm weather in June, some 100-degree days in June, we still had great crowds. And I will say, many of you were able to come and enjoy. The great thing about Hyman is that it's people from all over our community, and it's all stages and ages. You see a lot of parents, grandparents, and we have several groups that come from group homes in different places like that to enjoy it. And we really try to make it an enjoyable event with the backdrop of the beautiful Potter County Historic Courthouse.
What is the price of the meal?
We're going to keep it at $8. We went up a couple of years ago, and we need $8 to make it work. The caterers work with us on the price, but they don't donate the meal. So we do have some food costs, and as you all know, food costs are going up, but we do need an extra dollar or so in there to keep track of some of the other expenses. But it's such a community effort. I mean, we have Potter County, City of Amarillo. We even have the group from the Clemente family who helps us set up and tear down. And it does take a little bit of an army of volunteers, so we're always grateful, and we're so grateful for the partnership with Potter County. You give us a beautiful, beautiful venue.
It's nice that you continue to do this and always keep our place clean. It's always terrific after the use. You know, as far as the meals are concerned.
Of course. Of course. We always say music is free, lunch is only $8, but you're welcome to bring your own.
And just talk about the county market for a second.
Okay.
About how big that was. I'm sorry.
Let's jump right in right quick. Just jump right on. As far as the attendance, have you seen it, sorry, the world of the attendance?
We really have. Thank you, Commissioner Long. The hot weather in June last year hurt us a little bit because some of the seniors, it was just too warm for them to be out. But by August, we had really gotten back to our numbers. We averaged between 500 and 600 every week. And then the grand finale, when we finish up in August, we had 800. So it's an amazing, amazing community event, and we're proud to, we're proud to keep that tradition going. And to me, it's neat because if people can't always afford to go to Texas to play, or go to the symphony, or go to the Amarillo Opera, this is a chance for them to enjoy all of the great arts that our community has to offer.
Is there any contingency parting of strategies that will be in place to make sure your numbers don't go down?
The contingency is to come early. I spent a lot of time on the phone encouraging people to come early, and we are, we are, we know that the construction has made some growing pains for downtown, but I believe if they come early, I think they will be good. And the businesses around here are pretty good to work with us if we call ahead and work with them. They know that we'll be, we'll be taking over a lot of the parking for Hyman.
I'm just going to talk about the community market.
We love the community market. Thank you for talking about it.
If anybody has not gone to that, you've got to take a chance and go do this. Every Saturday starting...
This year, we're going to start on June 10th. Last year was our first year. We didn't get started until July 9th. And so we'll have 22 market days this year, which is a little, almost double what we had last year. And our market is a little different. We are from nine to one this year, so to me, that's very civilized. Nobody has to get up too early. And then we have produce, we have fresh flowers, we have herbs, we have plants, we have home-baked goods, jams, jellies, and we have arts and crafts. And that's one thing that sets us apart and makes it a true community market. We have several entrepreneurs who have booths, and from that booth, they are beginning to make a real business. A great example is the woman who has the booth, Barkology. Barkology is gourmet doggy treats, and we know people spend a lot of money on their pets because they love their pets. And she is going to be working with our convention investor council to do doggy treats for an upcoming convention with police dogs and trained canine units. So I think it's fun because we're giving these entrepreneurs a way to expand their own business, and we couldn't be more excited. Last year, getting started, we really didn't know what to do when other long-term events had closed Polk Street. So during the Harley party that day, we just didn't have a market. But by the next one, I got smart and asked Judge Tanner if we could be allowed, just on those days, to use a parking lot of the Santa Fe building. And it was nice because we were able to keep our market downtown, and the people who came to your Tri-State Fair Parade, the people who came to the Susan Common Race for the Cure, they all enjoyed the market, and we got to keep having it those sale days. And the vendors really appreciated those extra sale days. So this year, I thought I would just make it part of my summer ask to say, we'd love to come back, and we just appreciate the partnership because we always want to be respectful of our county.
Thank you for your work.
Motion that we approve, you got Hyman Square.
I would just want you to...
I'll second the motion. I do need to see how they listed. I do want to say that these are great activities. The reason I think they're so good for Potter County is often is it gives people a positive experience to come to the court.
That's right.
Generally, if you come to the courthouse, it's necessarily positive. You have to pay taxes, you've got to do something else. And so it's, it's neat. I'm glad we can partner. So you mentioned, and super judge, you get married. Oh, you get married too?
Okay, I have a question. Number two, favor which right hand.
Thank you. And just one more note. You know how proud I am of the courthouse restoration and how beautiful our historic courthouse is? This month, in the medallion, this is the winter edition of the medallion, which is from the Texas Historical Commission. And last spring, the editor, Andy Rhodes, came through Amarillo. And look at that beautiful picture of your courthouse. And it's really showcasing all the work, all the restoration, and all the hard work we put into it. It's showcasing that to our whole state. And I want you to be really proud of that because it's a, it's a beautiful thing. I'm going to leave this with my head because I want it to be part of his files showing how proud we all are of our beautiful historic courthouse.
Appreciate you. And thank you, Mike, and your team.
All right, number eight, Texas A&amp;M AgriLife, to hear an update before frost bowls on behalf of the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife extension.
We just want to, in working with Commissioner McGee, update the court regularly about what goes on on our side of town and what we do for our constituents in Potter County. To start off, really just the new year, the last time I was here, we had kind of closed the year. Now we have restarted our planning sessions and our programming sessions. One of our, myself and our ag law specialists from the district office over on the boulevard, put together a program and some materials for the people in our state in the way of land and animal leasing. We offered a rancher's leasing workshop in July last year, and we were awarded the Superior Service Award this year at the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Conference in College Station, which is the highest award available for little P on county agents like me. So I was very, very proud of that. Couldn't, couldn't make it because we were on the home front doing things, but it was certainly an honor to have that. Shortly after that, our county livestock show took place, and I know that some of you showed up for that. We certainly appreciate the presence there. 155 animals entered on behalf of 4H. That's over two-thirds of the participation in that county show. Roughly 100 participants. We were the grand champion in every species and reserve in all the species except for heifers. So that certainly shows the hard work that goes into, from our kids. If you know anything about the livestock show, and if you know anything about me, one of my pet peeves is showmanship, which is another award. So that, that goes into work at home and how proud those kids are of their livestock and how well they exhibit them. Probably the shining moment for that is we won every single showmanship category for all species, including rabbits. I can't take credit for rabbits because I don't know how to show one, but all the other ones certainly heavily involved there. And those kids did a killer job. Two weeks after that, our annual oak conference, which has been going on for, how long, I mean, I mean, long time, probably would happen without my involvement, but 130 attendants, and most of those are commercial or non-political applicators for the Texas Department of Agriculture pesticide applicator license. 130 attendants received their CEUs. Very, very well-attended conference, probably the most attended of all of the things that we do all year. What I have included is a summary. One of the, one of the main things that we did in our office, or I took on in our office, is a social media presence and reaching more and more people with the information that we have. We have all of the resources in the world and extension, but sometimes we don't do the best job of getting it out. We might mail out a newsletter, we might send it to a long email list, but in terms of real engagement and involvement, sometimes we don't do the best job of really disseminating that information. But through the use of social media and face-to-face meetings, we reached, if you see that graphic on the front there, 261 face-to-face contacts, over 25,000 reaches. I drafted this at the beginning of January. I keep a running tally, just for, really for my information, and we're actually closer to 27,000 total reaches on our Facebook page. So through the use of regular information, some of our horticulture minute videos on our Potter County Horticulture Facebook page, so getting that out. Those are some of the face-to-face programming efforts. I don't think I need to go through every single upcoming program, but there is a list of all that we have in the way of horticulture and agriculture producer programming efforts that are coming up. Then this year, one of the things that we did not have last year was a master gardener intern class. Our master gardener program has suffered some in the last two or three years, but we are really making a valiant effort to put that together. We have five new interns, and these folks are, I could probably sit down and learn more from them than they could from me. If you see, I'm not on the speaker's list very much, but we drag in as many experts from the area as we can to help really prepare those folks. So five interns, that, that class is very, very involved, 50 hours of education and 50 volunteer hours. So it takes a lot to become a master gardener. It's not just show up and pay and sign off. It takes a lot of effort on their behalf, as well as our current master gardeners, to make sure that that program runs smoothly. So five new interns. Now, if they all complete, we'll have a roster of about 17. There's a couple that I'm not sure if they still want to be involved or not, but I'm going to count for, for numbered purposes, a roster of about 17, and we're pushing on from there. And then that last one is some of our marketing efforts for our agriculture producer, Sorghum, I-40 Sorghum Luncheon that's coming up in March. But other than that, it's, it's very, very well. I just, I got home Saturday from the San Angelo and San Antonio road trip that we did very, very well. Had a reserve breed champion there, reserve division, two class winners, several sale placing animals. And so it was, it was certainly a good trip for us and those 4H members and families.
I know you said also, but the amount it gave, how long did it take to film a match or?
50 education hours and 50 hours of volunteer service. So if you look on the, I guess that's the third page, that is our, our, our calendar. You can see we started on the 21st, and roughly every other Saturday, there's some that I had to move around because I was gone or we couldn't, we didn't, we couldn't get the building. The very last one I had to move because it was on May the 6th, and I started looking at my calendar, and I knew I had something, and May the 6th was my wedding. So I moved to the rainwater harvesting workshop immediately, immediately. Roughly every other weekend, they give up six to seven hours of their Saturday to come in or to tour certain places for those educational purposes. And then we have six or eight different events that they can volunteer at. They can also bring their own volunteer hours in, as long as they are representing AgriLife Extension and representing the Texas Master Gardener Program. And I did drop off a thank you letter from our national, our national qualifier and national winner. She did, Cheyenne Bailey did win her category at the national contest. But thank you letters to everyone for supporting us, and more importantly, supporting her. Thank you all very much.
Number nine, burn ban, to consider next upon proposal of burn ban from February 27, 2017, to May 27, 2017. This lapsed on January 24th, and no one's at fault. It's vote, but generally, county attorney keeps up, but we have come up with a way, and I, to make sure that never happens again.
It's in my phone, in my calendar, so I'll have it.
Okay. It's in all of that to me. So now, from now on, we had to do the emergency for one week, and then it expired Friday, so we had to do one for Saturday and Sunday. And now today, we're going to do one for nine days.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we approve the, or pending, of our fires and parking.
I have a motion to second on the favor which right hand.
What did you plan to keep up with?
Well, it's going to be a calendar way before, so we can check with the fire department to make sure it still needs to be done, or you guys will let us know.
I'll put it in my calendar for about 15 on May, so we've got a couple weeks ahead.
And I'm just giving you a hard time tag because I can't.
Call day.
Okay. So that was a vote, five was it, correct? Number 10, Westlaw Legal Research Company, to consider next upon an annual renewal of Westlaw contract for well-based legal research.
There's no change in the contract fees or anything along those lines?
I don't know if there's a change in the fee. I think there is a small change.
What is that?
I don't think it's...
I don't think there's, no.
And we have enough in the budget to offset that?
Is it annual, if any?
Yes.
Are they just every year? I want to remember if it's like...
They sort of...
It's a percent, a carry, a percent.
Typically, it's an annual increase.
So Carrie, this document that we see the renewals to the far right, I see term increases seventy percent year one. We go back to the ratio, three percent?
Somewhat, yeah. Okay.
I moved, we approved the contract, the annual renewal contract with Westlaw for web-based legal research at the Potter County Detention Center.
Second. I have a motion in second on favorage right here. Five to zero. Thank you. This one is teacher for inmate GED program, to consider an act upon a program to hire a GED, first person inmate is Potter County.
And this is using commissary funds to, I, for a part-time instructor, basically that instructor will be there to prep inmates, get online to take their GED, obviously, so if you can get them GED while they're in there doing nothing, it may be a good job. You can have them.
The next one, I think.
So we're using commissary funds, and it's just a, a part-time, just basically, regular part-time.
A regular part-time, is it something like you've already got somebody in line?
Yes, we have, one that's been in the school system, learning, trying to get everything figured out, what it takes to get a start. That's why we ask for computers, the board, so we can get that all lined up and get the room set up, so she can basically be there to help them get online. We'll have to pay through commissary funds each student, once they get finished with the GED, it costs like forty dollars, thirty-five dollars per test, no guarantee for tests, so it's about a hundred and forty dollars per student that we try to pay. Right now, at first, we had like a hundred and sixty-three, right now we got ninety-one solid, you know, we haven't gone through, see which one's, to start, yes, we're gonna do, hopefully between ten to fifteen inmates at a time, this is a piece, maybe three, four times a week, several times a day, in class.
This is very different thinking. This is great, that you guys are launching something like this. What, the inmates just, do they just sign up and say, yes, I'm interested, or how do they, what is that?
First, the bits in there, they're just very headcounted, asking, anybody interested in doing this, to see if we even had enough that was interested to, to start thinking about it. That's what a hundred and sixty-three, I would say, yeah, I am. And then we went in there and passed out, you know, the form that they need to fill out, why do you want to do this, Michigan City was really invested. And there's like ninety, ninety-one of them that filled that out, so we're gonna have to go through there and see, you know, see if they're able to, you know, if they're serious about it, check through what their charges are, they're all of them, even, no matter what their charge is, they still can do it, but you have to kind of, by classification, have it grouped up in the different sessions that you have. So when we did that, like I say, we're still in the process of going through the training on them to see, you know, who will have for the first fifteen, getting paid the, getting first paid.
What is the timeline for to get someone through it?
It's all, you know, it's, it's computer, you know, online type, you know, so it's self-paced, you know, some of them may finish it, you know, a lot quicker than others, you know, you may have some in there for six months, or others may finish it in two months. But, you know, they also have to take a test to see where they're at, what level of education that they're at, and so that will also make a difference on how soon they finish.
So, so, so still in the base, base, but the number of inmates, the, maybe four H10, ten, fifteen?
Ten to fifteen computers is what we're gonna have in that room, so that will be per session, and she'll do like an hour and a half or two-hour session in the morning, and two-hour in afternoon type deals. And we're just gonna have to kind of play, you know, play with and see how that works. She can't get over ninety hours a week, so that's what we're kinda doing.
So she'll be there in the morning, and then she'll come back in the afternoon? How does that work?
Yes, if she's gonna, if she's gonna teach in the morning, then she'll come back in the afternoon and keep setting. So like I said, we're gonna, we're gonna figure out what's, you know, what works best to, you know, kind of our feeding, revisitation, all the other stuff that we have. Plus, we can just hire the, you know, the, the special programs where the management seems to be working pretty good, pretty glad people are interested in that, so.
She's very good.
Yeah.
Do you have goals of how many you're trying to get through, or you're just trying to establish it?
If we get, if we get one person through it, I think that's a positive, though. I mean, that sounds good, that, you know, that, right handle, there's no goals, I'm just gonna wait and see what happens. Because the inmates, you know, they get, they come in, they bond out, they come, they come back in, we're just gonna have it there for them. As they get out, it's gonna be up to them to, to finish it out outside of jail. If they come back in, then they can pick up where they left off and continue on with it. But we're not setting any numbers, too, we really don't know, you know, I guess, if we get one person, I guess, with GED, that's good.
And is there a reason that you're hiring someone part-time instead of, like, consulting with someone? Immediately, I'm thinking about things, some new things that Emerald College is trying. You know, they've got a lot of national recognition, too, for really out-of-the-box thinking, and I'm thinking about exactly that scenario, let's say, an inmate starts, but then can't biz out, right? You want them to get out of jail and get back to being in the community members, viable citizens. And so that transition point is where we lose a lot of people. So I think about partnerships, like Emerald College, or AISD, or something along those na, that nature to help that handoff. So if that happens, and sometimes if you have an individual that works in those locations, that's an easier handoff. So I just didn't know if, why, why the thinking around hiring a part-time instead of maybe an interlocal of some type?
And to live might be to the thing that this is, it's, like, if they're reaching out and, and, they not, I don't think they're, they're confident of where they are right now, but the, the onset of, of initiative or some, of less, you know, and see how things will happen.
So we, we have to have somebody, I mean, officers, you know, we're our way to shore it, you know, so we can't have actual officer in there, you know, but you gotta get them logged on to the, to the computer side, you gotta get them tested to see what, you know, what they're at. So this is something that, that Emerald College or whoever, I doubt that they're gonna provide us with free, you know, free people to do that. But, and, and she's in there, too, while they're studying them, they're, they're programmed there. So if they have questions, she can help, you know, ask, ask questions, kind of. So she's there while they're in there.
Right. And with my experience in the mental health court, they, these people do better one-on-one with a human being than they would do with a computer or whatever. I mean, you're gonna work on a computer, they do better if someone's there saying, okay, let's do this, let's do that, because they lose interest in the real affairs.
Yeah, and my question, I may have said it incorrectly, was if we would be more aligned with using a staff member from Emerald, paying for the services, but using someone that specializes in this type of environment and working with community members that are trying to get, get back into the swing of things? That was my one question, was using someone within the structure? But it sounds like you have a plan, but I just...
I can't, I can't think of the name of it, it just, the, the, there's a, a program, the GED program that here locally, that is providing and paying for the region, so that's free, and, you know, the, the, I'm on the area foundation, or whatever, something, I can't remember.
I think that's right.
So they're, they're actually paying for the region, so it's, it's free, so, I mean, they will know who's, you know, taken in, who's, you know, signed up for it. So hopefully, and we can point them to that, if they do get out, and here, that's where you need to go to complete that, but as far as Emerald College, can you come in?
Yeah, and I don't want to speak for them, I'm just, I'm just thinking a little bit out loud, and I think the community is primed for a conversation like this, so maybe once you get it up and running and know a little more what it looks like, just know that you have, I feel like you have community support, and I certainly don't want to speak on their behalf at all, or, or our school district at all.
Because the, the actual, perhaps Kathy Hazelwood, who's gonna be doing this, she can't even administer the test that we have to have, we're gonna have to have our, some of our parish officers that we pay, that, you know, that are pretty good inmates, whatever, have them attend class to be able to administer the test, because you have to have a second person, person that's teaching. Oh, it's, like I say, it's no, it's, we're kind of, I don't know, well, that's, often what it's, it's like...
Thank you for trying.
Yes.
Second, and Carrie, I don't know if we need to say part-time and where the funds are coming from, I don't think that, you should, we discussed.
Part-time with funds, to be from the, from the council.
Okay, I have a motion in second on favorage right here. Five to zero, thank you. Number twelve, Emerald Tri-State Exposition Lease Receiver Status Report on the Tri-State Expositions, Acquisition of Insurance Coverage on Certain Buildings and Termitation Recounties Coverage on the same. So, understand they have had insurance since September, they're insured. You've still not heard anything?
I've heard that, well, we, we did have a solid dent to the lease back, which requires the, the insurance. Whether they voluntarily had already got...
I can provide some background, Judge. So I was working with Tad last week, I knew this agenda item was coming up, saying, have we heard anything, have we heard anything? We intentionally kind of put it on the calendar with the effective date of March first, if I remember right, we've released the insurance, but we knew we would have a commissioner's score as a safety net, obviously, we want to be good stewards of that property. I reached out to Virgil, very, just calm and said, hello, sweetie, we've had that covered since September, that was part of the deal, and I went, well, we probably need to work on some internal processes here in terms of follow-up. I said, there's a document out there that I know has not been signed, we'll get that signed and turn that over to you. So that happened over the weekend. According to them, they've been covered since September, they don't know what the issue is, that's what they committed to, and they held up their, maybe, so I feel like it's a resolved issue.
So, so who this is, who this is?
I had not been notified that it's covered.
I don't think any of them.
I just picked up the phone and called and asked.
Well, I can tell you that to a party, it's representative, cows, cows, I'm asking to give them cash. And the first that I got, it was September twenty-fourth, when I received, the signed in, the, 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 whether or not they've already voluntarily acquired it, I don't have a certificate yet, but I would be asking for that, to the, which is something the amendment also requires. I don't have that in hand yet. That certificate should show, hopefully verified, it's gonna be taken place since September, but I didn't think that risks were certifiable, it didn't complete until sometime afterwards.
Yeah, it was toward the end of September, first, October.
Which would follow this timeline. I mean, I had him on an afternoon out in the field, you can tell, instead, I'll sign that and get that over to you right away. So we got that, we've already completed a motion last court to have that moved over March first, so I don't feel like we need action, Judge, I just wanted to make sure the full court wasn't, weren't on the side.
So Karen, you will hear, you will contact their, their legal counsel today, I'm assuming, and get that?
Oh, I'll ask for a copy of the certificate, which the amendment to lease entitles us to, I don't think it responds. Then, as a lawyer, I can't contact, Debbie Royer's client directly, but I can certainly attest or ask, if you want to. I'll just communicate with you, Judge.
Okay, okay. Okay, so we will just pass that. Number thirteen, local government corporation to hear...
Sweetie, it's definitely a local government state. I'm sorry. This will be a quick update. The LGC met last Wednesday. The two big timelines that I want to make sure the full court is aware of, the parking garage, which you can visibly see, is nearing completion, expecting that to finish April. We anticipate being in our Potter County spots early May. We did host the first kind of strategic planning conversation at PRPC with a lot of our department heads and elected officials about who was gonna go in our hundred and fifty spots. So that conversation has been well underway, and I thought it was good, really good dialogue and discussion. I actually got a few follow-up comments from some of our judges about appreciating an opportunity to dialogue about that, so I thought that was a good outcome. And then the hotel, that you can see as well, nearing completion, that is scheduled late summer, possibly early fall, but right now, they're saying late summer. The LGC is working on a community tour and trying to position that where the parking garage is done and the hotel is almost done, so you can see two properties at one time. And then the LGC took action for Bob Garrett to be the entity that is gonna be leasing the retail property at the bottom of the hotel, or, I'm sorry, at the bottom of the parking garage. The Excel property will also have retail at the bottom, and this is the same entity, retail real estate agent that is gonna be leasing both of those. So I think there's already been some community questions about people driving by saying, how do I get in that spot type of thing? So that was the formal action taken by the LGC. More to come.
We'll go back to next one.
We, Agent.
There was an executive session that was held, and so more to come.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Thank you very much. Number fourteen, formal bid award to consider an act upon warning, formal bid number one-one-four-one-dash-one-seven, road materials to the lowest responsive vendors listed in the award recommendations.
This is an annual one that we do every year, and in the attachment, if you have any questions, Sebastian's here to verify this contract that's starting in March, which we do every year. Sebastian, any comments?
Nope.
I make a motion that we approve awarding formal bid number one-one-four-one-dash-one-seven, road materials to the lowest responsive vendors listed in the recommendation.
I have a motion in second on favorage right here. Not in any of the projects. The jail report is five hundred and thirty-seven people in our jail today, that's a lot. Four hundred and thirty-eight of those are male, ninety-nine are female, no one's in children, correct, Chief?
Yes, no problem.
Okay. Thirty-nine percent of those are felons, and thirteen percent are prisoners. The county insurance, no, which brings out the executive session, we're gonna get that people, agenda items for next time? Okay? If there's nothing else, we are...